Some cities are notoriously horrible.
Oh, yeah. No, we're pretty good. The Muscatine City Council will come to order, council, tonight's in-depth session. Looks like we have about three things on the agenda tonight, beginning with a presentation by Mr. Jeff Miller in the Muscatine Community School District.
Blackrock call.
No roll call tonight.
No roll call.
Jeff, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members and folks in the audience.
I'm remorse in introducing Mr. Don Krings.
Yes, this is Don Krings. He's the supervisor of busing and transportation. What we're here tonight is to kind of give you an overview of what we're possibly looking at during construction and hope that the plan that we finally want to present to you will work and make everybody happy. If you'll go to page one on the handout that I gave you, this is the first revision because in translation, we thought the city wanted to keep Ninth open and use it as a one-way during construction. So if you look at it, look to the gate right here, and that was, there was a gate there, and there was a gate at the west end, and that was 15-foot wide, and what that was put in there for was to pull semis in, and then you'd still have, make Ninth a one-way during construction. Okay? Well, the traffic committee and working with Steve Boca and Randy Hill, they got to looking at that, and they said, really, the safety factor there, they did not like that concept. So we had to go back to the drawing board, and so now, Don, if you'll throw up the second one. Because we still had, hold on just a minute, we still had the buses here, and we had buses down there, so that was not going to work. Then we came back, it's kind of the same layout. You can see the fenced-in area around the construction area, but what we've done this time is, we're asking for consideration to basically close Ninth here, and close Ninth to the west with a double gate, and then all this area around here would be fenced. There would be no access to the alley, so the folks to the south of the project would not be inconvenienced with traffic up and down. The other thing we did for safety was, now the buses, and I'm going to let Don explain this, but we've moved the pickup and drop-off for students, and, go ahead, Don.
We tried to keep the pickup and drop-off as normal as we could, but we did have to make some minor changes, and we looked at a lot of different options, too. But the best solution we came up with is having the Jefferson students, when they're dismissed at around 3:00, 3:05, they're going to get picked up on Cedar Street in front of Central Middle School. So the kids are going to have to walk back around through Central a little bit, and then they'll be, they'll be taken to Cedar Street and get on the buses. Those buses will leave, and then the buses that'll pick up the Central kids will come in after them. It'll separate the buses from the parents who are going to be picking up on Mulberry, and hopefully help alleviate some of the congestion due to the loss of Ninth Street.
Where do you currently pick up? What's the typical pattern right now?
Well, currently, the Central, we pick up the middle school kids at, on Central, or Cedar, excuse me. The Jefferson kids get picked up on Mulberry.
Okay, so you're not using Ninth Street for any bus pickup?
We have, we usually have one or two buses there, but they'll be all put, moved to Cedar.
When do you propose construction?
Great, I'm glad you asked that, because these are some of the notes I have. Talking with the architect and everything else, one of the questions that I asked him was, when do we actually see us proposing to block off Ninth Street? And he's, he's thinking about the middle of April. So then my next question back to him was, when do we actually see it opening back up? And back to him was probably June 1st of 2015. Okay, so it's one school year would be substantial completion on the project. The building is 65,000 square feet. So basically, what it's going to do is, we're not hindering these folks really, or the two down on the other end. We have, we're in negotiations and basically have been given the okay, and we're in the process of finalizing a deal with one of the homeowners out of the two that were left in the middle, that we did not purchase out of the first six.
Is that the one that the fence line runs through the house on here?
Yes, that would be, yes, that would be 308.
Right here. The fence line right there, there's, these two go out, and then these two have access because of garages off of Ninth Street.
Those two there.
Yeah, but this one they're buying. So what do you, what's the prognosis for the future on Ninth?
At this point, we're still in negotiations with the second homeowner. We don't want to commit to, at this point, saying, we're asking for a vacation, a complete vacation of Ninth Street. Is it still in, is it still on our horizon? Definitely, but at this point, you know, I don't, I don't want to go down that road, but yes, Phil, that is...
Because the problem is, you have somebody on either end of Ninth Street that their garages face, like, come off of Ninth Street, not off of Cedar.
And we're aware of that, yes.
I mean, you could allow for permanent easements, but the city, the traffic committee, the school are still in discussion about a long-term solution for this site, so there is no decision made on that at this point in time. That will come back to council at a later date. This is just for temporary closure during construction.
So when the gates are closed, as of, let's say, April, they're closed, and they remain closed unless somebody needs to bring a semi in or it loads in, that they're, they don't open it for a month or anything?
Correct. The idea of the gating is to keep the area secure and safe, you know, from kids wandering in there or anything else. And like I said, the first plan we took to the traffic committee, and I sit on the traffic committee myself, I was not at that meeting, but talking with Randy and Mr. Boca, they didn't like that for the safety, so then Don, myself, and the superintendent would have been here, but at this point, I didn't feel he needed to be here, plus he was under the weather. I thought moving the buses down to Cedar, and there's 85 students, basically, that you haul out of Jefferson right now?
Yeah.
And so, so next week, I will have both principals, superintendent, Don, and myself will be here, but we wanted to give you guys an idea and a week to think about it, because I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions.
And this is an alley running through here that'll be closed where?
Now...
That's not an alley?
There, there is an alley where the 233 feet is listed.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is an alley.
It's an alley, but...
Right, and it'll be closed here?
No, the fence line's, fence line's not in the alley.
Right here, right here, you're over here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, this is the house we're looking at right here, that's that alley.
That's the alley, okay.
Jeff, are you going to buy it?
There is no alley there.
Are you going to buy those properties?
I don't know.
We have, the 308, 308, yes, the paperwork is being started, it, yes, it is being purchased.
It's this one?
306 has not been purchased. The alley that the city owns?
This is the one you're still...
We are not looking at that at this point, okay? And the other thing I really want to make clear is, the alley that runs behind those houses that we purchased, that fence line is not going to have an opening to that alley, so there will be, there should be no traffic coming in and out of the lay-down area, you know, using that alley.
I'd be remorse if I didn't offer some concerns dictated by my other part-time job. There are currently six buses on Cedar Street every day. I've been one of those six buses for three years now. That's crowded. A seventh bus can't come in until the head bus leaves, because there's just no room for seven buses. That's part of the problem, but in addition to that, if a public safety vehicle has to come out Cedar Street heading north at a ridiculous rate of speed, there's not a lot of width there. So that's been a concern of mine for some time. The buses are currently taking up at least half of the sidewalk to leave lateral space on Cedar Street so emergency vehicles can get through. I've witnessed truck drivers that couldn't get through. They'll set the brakes in their truck and get out and move those portable stop signs just so they can get through.
And that's, you know, and you're absolutely right, and that's a problem that exists now. I mean, whether we do this project right.
So, Don, if you're, if you're going to, if you're going to load the Jefferson grade schoolers up on Cedar Street at 3:05?
Yep.
That's probably going to be a 10-minute process.
No, the, though, right now, I have one bus that's there until about 3:00, 3:12, and that's only if they're held up because kids aren't getting out, but the rest of them are in and out. A lot of the kids get out a little earlier before 3:00, or before 3:05, so they're in and out fast. They'll be gone long before the Cedar, the middle school buses are there.
What time again are the middle school buses?
Three, well, the school gets out at 3:25. But quite honestly, I mean, it's, no matter what we do, it's going to be congested.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's...
You're absolutely right.
Big challenge.
But once this project's done, it's sure going to be a lot nicer.
But I'm not only concerned for the traffic, the normal traffic, parents picking up their students, so I'm concerned for the students, but I'm also concerned for the unforeseen emergency that might take place somewhere north of Central Middle School.
I think, though, with the, doing the shuttle that way, like getting three or four of the buses in, and then they're gone, and then the other buses come in, we shouldn't be any worse off than we are now, which isn't great, but it's, you know, we, everybody's learned how to deal with that.
And it's not really related to this project, but obviously Cedar Street will be under construction as well, and for that pre-construction meeting, we'll have city staff, the school will be there, MPW will be there, Trinity will be there, Unity Point, we'll have all of the potentially affected folks there for a good discussion on exactly how we handle not only emergency, but school issues and hospital issues, so...
So what's the game plan after this? If, if the school, what, not if the school opens, when the school opens, are we going to still be doing buses on Cedar Street and on Mulberry, and, or is it planned to go on the Ninth Street being closed?
I was, I was, I was just waiting, I was hoping somebody'd ask that question, because I have that, too. So, in the, in the whole scheme of this project, the parking lot and the school itself is under one contract, okay? The second contract will come, the demo of the new, or the old Jefferson should start in June of 2015. We have to bring that down, and then a third contract would be the bus lane that would come up the north side of where Jefferson is to allow it to meet up with what would be 10th Street in line with it, okay? So you basically are looking at three different scenarios.
So the bus, bus lane's going to come in from where?
It'll come off of Cedar, and, and I'll let Don explain it because they're his buses, but they will come off of Cedar and exit onto Mulberry.
Along the, what's, what's now staff parking, and between that and the track?
Yes, by, by the track.
Because with, with the parking going across the street now, you shouldn't need to utilize that parking on the north side or the backside of Central and Central's gym.
So you're going to be, that's where the buses will pick up and drop off students?
Correct.
So you wouldn't be on Cedar Street at all?
No, that, that's, that's the ultimate goal right there.
What about, what about, and we're talking about the future, the utilization of the field and the track for Central Middle School athletic activities?
It'll, it won't change, it'll still be there.
I understand that, but now you have bus traffic there.
Well, we're talking about, the architect, in his plan, has a gate that goes up, you'll have the Jefferson buses up to the east side, they'll exit, okay? Then you load the Central buses, they exit, it'll be like the swipe card that you have, or, you know, to get into schools, that would activate that gate. There'd be a gate there so you would not have, through traffic, being able to get through there.
Plus, those buses should be long gone before the kids get changed into their gear and get out to that, we should be gone by then. So, I mean, but they'll always, just like they are now, though, we have kids and parents crossing between our buses on Cedar Street and Jefferson to pick up their kids, and you've seen it, coming in, you know, it's not a, it's not a very good situation. This is going to be much improved.
So if you come back next week, right, can you bring us a, the master plan sheet showing what the future of this entire site looks like?
Sure, I can, I can get ahold of Tyler and get that for you.
Except it's not going to have a final solution for Ninth Street at this point.
Right, I mean, I won't have, because we're not going for the, we're not going for the vacationing, and I don't want to muddy the waters and throw stuff out there that may or may not happen. I can give you the scenarios that will happen.
Are known.
Or are known, correct.
From Ninth Street over to the residential area, and from Mulberry to Cedar, I'd like to know what's planned, because we haven't seen any of that.
Okay. The other thing I just want to reiterate is, we're trying to, we're trying to put something, and it's going to be nice when it's done and dress the area up, it's not going to be easy, and there's going to be, you know, pitfalls here and there that we know we're going to have to address. And, and until that happens, I don't want to put it out there that this is going to happen or that's going to happen. We will address it, so...
Can you just send us an email with, with an attachment, with a small picture of this? That way, you don't have to bring it to the meeting.
I appreciate it.
Jeff, my question is, since this project is going to take over a year or more, okay? Why don't we have an entryway from Mulberry to connect to Cedar right now?
Because...
If you come, if you come and that, I mean, that will eliminate, not for the short term, but for the long term, I mean, despite if Ninth is fixed or not, if you have an entryway coming from Mulberry to connect to Cedar, within that, work for all the buses, and all the buses will be parked on the side of Central and Jefferson there on the south side instead of Cedar, period?
We kind of looked at that, right now, the drop-off, the amount of work that it would take, we'd be right up against Jefferson the way it is now. Our hope is Jefferson will be long gone by the time we have the buses in there, by the time we put that lane in. But the drop-off, there's just not quite enough room for us to feel safe about doing that right now, I mean, because we did look at that.
Because the other thing that, that, like Don started to say, you bring that in, now you still have cars parking on Mulberry, even though the buses can see over, plus there's such a drop-off, the fill and everything else, we're going to end up tearing that road out, and I'm going to just throw a number out there like the architect did, too. You, in order to make that handle the weight of those buses, you'd be looking anywhere from $200,000 to $300,000 just for a year, where we're sitting there saying, give us the opportunity, we'll work with it, let's put them out on Cedar Street. If we have to look at, maybe even, and I don't even want to say it, because I'll bring it up to the traffic committee, but there may be something we can do on Cedar on the opposite side, where, you know, it, if it's that congested, Mayor, where we're worried about it, maybe I pour a little more sidewalk, I don't know, so that they can, they can pull on that sidewalk that's there now. I just don't want to waste the money for a temporary thing if everybody is able to understand, this is going to, this is going to happen, be patient, avoid the area if you can. I understand the residents around there can't, but if you really have no reason to go through there, avoid it, avoid the traffic, and it's really, truly busy. If you, if you go over there and look at Ninth Street on any given day, it's in the morning and it's at dismissal. Other than that, there's not a whole lot of traffic on Ninth Street. So I don't think we're inconveniencing everybody in the community. We're going to try and get it done, get it done quickly, and then move on.
How do you propose to orchestrate the continued activity at the Center for Performing Arts?
Well, that's the other thing that we, we have done, is, basically, there are no scheduled events, we have scheduled nothing for Central or Jefferson over the summer due to utility, changeovers, and what have you, as this building comes up. The performing arts, it's going to be, as they, they call in to use it, they're going to know this is going on, that there, there is not going to be parking. We've talked about possibly running shuttles from the riverfront up to the school, or you're just going to have to park in the residential area. I mean, short of that, I don't have the answer, I've taken to the traffic committee, we've, we've talked about it around there, and you could park, maybe, we haven't talked to the council about this, but possibly if the, the parking lot in the back of the Arts Center is going to be redone, maybe using that and letting people walk down to the performing arts there. It's, you know, there is no simple solution there, but we, we have thought about this, this isn't a knee-jerk reaction we've come up with, we just need to make the public aware, yeah, it's going to be a year or so with...
I would, I would, I guess I would suggest that a plan be put together for parking for the Center for Performing Arts. I would hate to see that activity slowed down or discontinued for any length of time.
Well, and we're not discontinuing it, as they call in, whatever activity it is, my administrative assistant is making them aware that the parking is not going to be available, you know, and if you need to move it for one year or whatever, feel free, otherwise we'll offer shuttle from the riverfront up.
As viable alternative, sure.
Right, I mean, this, this is not going to be fun, but I think it'll be beautiful when it's done, and I, I hope the council can see it, I hope the public can see it, and they can move forward.
Pretty good challenge. Council, any questions? Thank you, Jeff, Don.
Appreciate it.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, next on the agenda, community garden presentation, this is, I believe, a Leadership Muscatine idea, is that correct?
You are correct.
And I guess I'm introducing at this time, we call him Mr. Chili here at City Hall, Mr. Adam Thompson, hi, Adam.
Hey, how's it going, guys?
Want to introduce your associates?
Yep, I will definitely do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
With me tonight is the rest of my Leadership Muscatine group. Raise that down for the shorter people, I guess I'm the shortest in my group. With me is Krista Jen and JR Hendricks, they're members of our group, Leadership Muscatine Group. Let me pull up our presentation here. Bear with me for just one moment. All right, and Krista's going to start us off.
Well, thank you for letting us speak to you tonight. As you already said, we are here to present to you our Leadership Muscatine possible project, which would be creating a community garden in the city. Again, it's a Leadership Muscatine project, and we represented the idea to begin with at our presentation meeting, and it was brought to our attention by the Blue Zones that this is one of their initiatives.
Oh, I gotta turn it on.
So, just to go briefly go over what we're going to speak to you, I'll go over the program features, and then Adam will speak about the possible sites, and JR will go over our garden features and the support that we have from the community. So for our program features, we definitely want it to be a self-sustaining program. So that will come from revenue that we will receive from the plot owners who will lease them out, so this will offset tilling up the land, preparing it before every year, their water supply that they will use, and other various expenses. We will also seek fundraising through grants and also community members, and this will go towards improvement, such as putting in more of a concrete pathway or expanding it in other ways. We also have composed a garden committee, which is including Annette Shipley, which is, she works for ISU Extension, she's the Master Gardener Liaison, as well as two or three master gardeners in the area, and Adam, and also two to four members who are leasing the plots, so that they can oversee any problems that there may be. We also want to have gardening classes, which will be put on by Iowa State, they already have material for that, and also they have handouts, which we could provide to them or at least provide the link to them. We also want to have dietary classes and cooking classes, these would come from Hy-Vee. We've been speaking to them, and they are very excited about the project, and their dietitian would love to include classes for in-season produce for our gardeners.
All right, so our first site that I'm going to talk to you about is our preferred site, and that is the location of Taylor Park. Here's a satellite view, give you a rough idea of where Taylor Park is. It is a small park that not too many know about, but it's located just southwest of Franklin Elementary School. I'll bring it in a little closer here, here's another satellite view of the park. The, the location that we propose for locating the community gardens is this area on the eastern side of the park, is where we want to possibly locate the community gardens. Some other features that we have in Taylor Park... Some other features that we have in Taylor Park is a small ball diamond, it's kind of outlined here in green. It's used primarily for T-ball, but it does accommodate some softball practices periodically. We have a small playground as well as a shelter that is located on the, the west side of Taylor Park. And like I said, this is our, our preferred site. Reasons for that is it has, has a, the, or accommodates parking fairly easily with on-street parking. It also has a better supply or an easier supply of, of water to our community gardens. Easy to tap on to and extend water line over to our gardens. Some other sites that we have looked at is, oh, sorry, here's a site plan that we had put together for Taylor Park. In doing this project and moving forward with it, we do want to break the project up into three, two or three phases. So, you know, essentially start out small, get it right, you know, work out any kinks that may be involved in the program or the project and then grow, grow from there. Some, and features of the, the garden JR is going to talk about in a little bit, some of the aspects of it. So, one of the other sites that we looked at is Robey League. So it's at the corner of Robey and League, just to the east, southeast of Cat Stein. We'll zoom in here on this property. This property is a city-owned property. It is not currently being used for anything other than a luscious green mowing area. And there is no, there's no future proposed use of, of this property in the future. Some difficulties that we have with the site is parking is limited down there. Right next to this is Musketeen's only bike lane and we really don't want people parking that bike lane or it kind of negates the, the use of that. And water access is, is slightly more difficult, but would be possible here. Another site that we have looked at is utilizing Musketeen Community College. Zoom in here, we talked with Bob Alby, the president, or Alby, sorry, president of MCC and he was very excited about getting involved in this project. As you know, MCC has a agricultural program there. This may be an opportunity to involve some of the MCC students in community gardens here in Musketeen. Where we propose placing community gardens would be just to the south of the greenhouse that they already have there on the site and then to the southwest of that, even more, the large green space that they have in the, the front of MCC. Some, some, the reason that we like this site is they already have significant amount of parking, which is, you know, is an important aspect to our community gardens as well as a water supply. We can tap right into the water supply that they have in, in the greenhouse. So those are our three sites. I have JR go through some of the features that we're looking at in the garden and then wrap up with what we've done to engage the community.
So for our garden, it's going to have three main aspects. First one being an enabled garden, which is basically a raised flower vegetable bed above the ground, about three feet above the ground. And by doing this, it'll allow those with mobility issues easier access to their plots as well as easier access to grow flowers, veggies, you name it. Our next aspect would be a youth plot. We feel it's pretty important to involve the youth in the community in something, especially a healthy activity that they can learn from and continue to do the rest of their lives. Our goal here is actually to provide this to the children for free. So that's one of our main goals. And then the last part is the regular lease, leased plots, which would be available to anybody in the community. Another aspect, why we chose the Taylor Park was it does have water access. And as you know, with any garden, water is the number one input. Without water, there is no garden, so that's a key feature. Also going to provide compost and mulch, we're going to have it be stored on site. We want to get that from the transfer station and keep it there for easy access to our gardeners so they can take care of their, their plots. And lastly, we want to provide them with wagons. We thought about wheelbarrows, but little kids might not be able to push a wheelbarrow, so we thought wagons would be good to move tools, sod their seeds, you know, anything they need to move around and help them to grow their plots. Oh, and also we would like to have the kids paint the wagons. We figured it'd be a great way to identify the wagons with the garden and kind of get everybody involved right away. So support that we've received so far, last Thursday, we actually met with the Musketeen Recreation Advisory Commission and presented exactly what we're doing right now. They gave their support and they seemed kind of a little excited about this, so that was a good start. Melford Church, they also have their own community garden type of gardens, but it's more based towards their church. So whereas ours would be more for the community itself. Also, as you heard before, the Musketee Iowa State Extension with Annette, lots of knowledge from there that can help us and help our gardeners increase and better their gardens. Also, the local master gardeners here in town, gardeners love gardens, so of course they, they're happy and excited about this. We've also spoken with Hy-Vee, spoke with Jim, the store director. He seemed very enthused and supportive about this project, which we thought was great. And of course, Blue Zones, being with the community garden being an initiative, and of course, the big thing right now is pushing for Blue Zones, so that's a great support as well. And our next plan of attack is this coming Tuesday, we want to meet with the, the people around the Taylor Park area. I want to discuss basically this again with them. And we're also going to have a notice in the newspaper in the coming days about our meeting on Tuesday.
Where is the meeting going to be held at?
Franklin Elementary School.
Franklin?
Five thirty on Tuesday, February eighteenth.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Yeah, that brings us to our questions and, and I do want to say that we're not, we're not asking for any action, obviously, tonight. We just wanted to bring this to your attention, answer any questions that you may possibly have. Then hopefully in a coming meeting, you know, get your approval to move forward with this. So yeah, please, any questions?
I, I, I just want to make a point that you said Melford Church has got a, a garden, that they, they've had the garden for several years down there, been very, very successful, that food is not just for the church people, that they literally give it away during the summer, every Saturday, like nine to eleven, which is great.
Yes, yes it is. No, it is, it is, it is a great activity, you're absolutely right that, and I guess what we meant by for the, the people that participate in the garden is more of the individuals involved in the congregation.
Yes.
Yes.
But they also have, you know, if there's someone that, that wants to have a garden, they also had plots available for them at that time too, last summer, and it was used a lot.
And we do have support from them as well. We've been talking to them in the community garden committee that we have and Melford was excited about having another garden as well. They even mentioned that possibly letting us use their tiller to help till the land that we ended up using, so.
So do you guys envision some kind of a schedule for volunteers to kind of oversee the, during the growing season or?
Yep, we want to put, like a, an information kind of hut thing down there that, you know, we can put community activities on or gardening activities, also on a Facebook page, stuff like that. Have a sign up sheet for if someone's going to be away from their garden on vacation for a week, you know, maybe someone can help pitch in and, and water on there, so. And that, and those ideas and, you know, issues that could possibly come up. Been thrown at us by, you know, Blue Zones and Annette with Iowa State Extension and, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people helping us and guiding us to have experience with community gardens and really lead us in the right direction.
Good, sounds like it.
Thank you.
The, the storage building is in phase two, so is it?
Yep, phase two and phase three, and, and like we said, that expansions and improvements to the site will be as funded as we generate, you know, private funding or grants to do so. The storage will be used for, it's essentially the wagons.
Tools or?
Yeah, and tools, yep.
You mentioned that Taylor Bar, Taylor Park, it has access to water?
Yes, it does.
Does the other two sites have access to water as well?
They, they do. With the Robey League site, it is, it is more difficult to get to because we have to go under the, the road, under the street to get to it. And MCC has great access to water. We don't have to go under any roads to connect to it and that's, that's the reason why we like Taylor. Reason we like Taylor Park is not only does it have access to water, we don't have to go any of the roads, but they already have a check valve and a regulator that needs to be installed, so there's not any, there are some costs to it, but it's limited because it already has some of the features that we need, that we don't have at the Robey League site.
Is it fair to say in the back of your mind that you would like to have all three of these sites up and going?
Uh, yes, definitely. I, I think, I think we, we look at this, you know, we look at a community as a whole and, you know, you start small, get it right. And then, you know, I think we do look at expanding community gardens to other sites in Musketeen, I definitely do.
Jack and the Beanstalk. Council, anyone else? Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Sarah, you.
I'd like to leave one word at the end.
Sure, but you have to come up to the microphone.
Well, I would just say, these kids have done such a wonderful job, working on the lease of Musketeen and the community gardens, you know, inspired by the Blue Zone, taking it seriously, but I'd like you to know, there are some other community gardens. They're doing this project on city property, but at the same time, Paul Carroll, who has had for many years.
Sarah, you're getting away from the microphone, I need you to get closer.
You're going to talk more than this.
Yeah, watch out, I won't be too long, but I wanted you to know that they're one of a really great thing that's coming along, inspired by the Blue Zone. Another one is Paul Carroll has had the garden behind MCSA, that's a raised garden and he's done most of it himself, but he distributes some of the produce to the people in the Clark House and so forth. There's going to be a garden on East Campus, a community garden there. And also Deb Brockhouse in their area out in the country is going to have a community garden, seems like I'm forgetting, and then the Melford. But the one great thing is, these people are really going in it, but we're going to work together to advertise them and it's hopeful that we'll have a kickoff to say, well, I'll back up a little bit. All these community gardens are put on a map of the city and on the back of the map, each of the gardens is going to have the list of their priorities, who can, who it's for, you know, does it cost any money? What are you going to do with your produce afterward, you know, do you keep it, do you give it to the homeless? Then there's a hope there'll be a real kickoff with advertising for the community to say, this is your opportunity to come out and sign up for a community garden. It might be at the time of the Master Gardeners gardening program. So everybody will know that they can come out and sign up, there'll be master gardeners talking about lessons and these guys will have a partner, but each of these community gardens is going to have a leader and then they're going to have a master gardener component. So everybody's taking, everybody has its own personality. These guys are really going into detail, but anyway, it'll be a great thing for the community. So thanks to them and thanks to the Blue Zone for inspiring us and everybody's like octopus doing different ways, but it's a bottom up, people are doing it because they really care. And then there's another aspect of the Blue Zones, it's really talking about how to distribute when, you know, zucchini or tomatoes come, be sure that everybody, no produce is wasted and that all goes to people who need it.
Sounds great, Sarah.
Sorry it wasn't too short, but thanks to you.
Thank you. Thanks, folks.
Thanks, Council.
Excellent.
Okay, item four on tonight's agenda, capital improvements program update. I'm assuming that's Andrew and maybe Steve?
You need this, Andrew?
No. So I know I spoke to you about this, this last month, but my, my part in this is much simpler tonight. Just kind of bring you up to date, what's happened in the past month is the Planning and Zoning Commission has a chance to review this and at, at their meeting on Tuesday, they voted to recommend approval of it. The only changes they had were minor editorial things and correcting some typos and they had a couple of things just they want, formatting for clarity. And so kind of what I, and what I'm looking for at this meeting tonight is to kind of get the sense of what changes the council would like to see in this draft, so then at another meeting, I can bring it to you with the resolution so that you can adopt it. At, at the last meeting, I gave kind of a presentation on what it is and what's in it. So I, I guess at this point, I'm just going to throw it open to any questions that you may have on or any comments on things that you would like to see added or removed from it.
Or the comprehensive.
Just open it up.
I'd like to see sewer extended to Eagle Ridge. Fill out a paper on that.
Right, and you, you did come see me, so I, based on that request, I went ahead and prepared pages for what that would look like for that, so the rest of the council can consider that, so.
I think it's good the way you've broken it down by category, Adam, and just the overall framework. I was speaking with Greg and, you know, some of the, some of the things in here need to be updated, the timing, like Cedar Street and things like that, but that's, those are details, not. And, and I think it's going to be a good tool for us to kind of have a, have a goal.
And hopefully this will be something we do on an annual, on an annual basis and kind of ongoing update it and so there'll be, there'll be annual updates to the, so it should be a little simpler to do once we get past the, kind of this initial one.
Andrew, I, I'd like to, and I know that, that everybody here has, has talked about it, has had their own comments, but in the last couple of weeks, I was handed a piece of paper of a newspaper that showed that the Greenwood Cemetery stairs this year will have their hundredth anniversary. It was actually finished, completed in nineteen fourteen. Historical thing that I really believe that we need to preserve. As we review the plans for the CIP, I'd like to interject some thoughts on the Greenwood Cemetery steps. Based on some successful experiences that, that you've all know about, the Weed Park Zoo Garden, the Weed Park Log Cabin, the Bandstand, the old Country Barn. Everybody in the community have, have encouraged Robert Bromwell and, and some of his reporters to look at the following steps. They believe that the Greenwood Cemetery Group should become a legal entity. This project will not cost the city a nickel. There, there will be annuities sought after within the community, no tax dollars. Something set up in the kitty for preservation so that there is no cost now, tomorrow, or days to follow. They're, they're, they're talking about setting up a short-term project, specifically that repairs the cemetery stairs to be reopened. Develop a long-term plan, which everybody's looking for, to, to support and upkeep all the repairs in the cemetery and believe it or not, the gravestones and other items that, that might need possibly planting more trees, maintaining gravel beds, et cetera. Other examples that, things that, that could be in long-term is that these steps in the long-term citywide recreational trail, trail plan. We could link them in to that. We could have an annual fundraiser activity such as a five K neighborhood walk, including ascending or descending the stairs. All I'm asking, or all this group is asking, is that the, that the council buys into this program, doesn't cost you a nickel, know which way that you look so that they can start, start going out and soliciting funds for this project. And of course, that they would like to have a positive nudge. and of course, that they would like to have a positive nudge from the council people, thank you.
Would you care to continue, Andrew?
Well, it, it's kinda really up to council, so kinda, kinda what I'm looking for tonight-
This particular item, or?
Yeah, I mean, i- i- is there kind of a consensus of council, you know, to, how to proceed on this item, so I, I guess, you know, that, that's kind of where we're at with that.
Well, it's my understanding, it's already been brought to the, what, the plant, or the community development and, and others, and, and didn't make the, the cut.
Park and Rec Commission did not recommend inclusion, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not recommend inclusion at, at their meeting Tuesday night.
It, yeah, that issue wasn't, they-
Excuse me, I, I don't believe that it was brought before the, the Planning and Zoning.
Right, wasn't even brought forward at that last meeting.
Thank you.
Um, there was nobody there in support of it, um, it's been statute recommendation, recommendation all along, not to include it, therefore, and obviously was not in the draft that we, that we presented, some, the comments that I've heard to date are, please don't put the money into this, there's been criminal activity, there's been vandalism on the site, and, um, it, you know, who's gonna really use, use this, there's other, obviously, you've seen the CIP, there's, there's a number of items in the CIP, the trail system are looking to do on, uh, Hauser, for example, where these dollars could be really put in, if, if we're really considering using it, you know, fine, you know, put it in the CIP, but if, if we're not, if it's not really consideration, then let's just, I guess, be done with it at this point in time and, and move on to the, uh, other-
Well, let's, uh, let, let's try to move off the dime right now then, and gather a consensus from council, whether it should be included on the CIP or not.
I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
Question, was it reas- was the reason it was rejected from these previous groups is because they were asking for the city to fund it?
I, I think that's, uh, been one aspect of it, nobody's ever come forward and said that we're gonna, we're gonna pay for it, I mean, that's still one aspect, I guess, our reply is, if, even if somebody is gonna repair it, we still have the ownership issue, we still have the liability issues, we still have the criminal activity, we still have the, the vandalism issues that I've heard, we have a lot of projects in that CIP that, and they're not gonna get done, um, they're not all gonna get done, I mean, is this, is this a priority project, um, or not, and from our perspective, from Park and Rec Commission's perspective, it was not a priority project.
To follow up on Phil's comment here, so, I don't know exactly what the procedure is, if a group came in with outside funding, and they have an endowment, uh, account to, uh, have it for maintenance down the road and everything else, where does the city stand on that aspect?
Well, the city would still have ownership, still have the insurance, would still have all of the other issues that go along with it, the potential for vandalism, potential, potential for criminal activity, there was an interesting concept that was brought up, you could always sell the stairs.
Mm-hmm, transfer ownership.
And, uh, to, uh, to a nonprofit third party, um, not, not the adjacent property, obviously, but you could sell the stairs and turn that liability and, and maintenance and cost and care over to that third party, which is an interesting concept, I'd probably wanna explore that a little bit more from a legal perspective, but, um, that, you know, if, if somebody's truly interested in maintaining these as, as a historic property, you know, we could entertain, uh, selling these for a buck.
Well, everything that's been mentioned here, I don't see a short-term plan, and I know there's been some talk of a short-term plan and a long-term plan, but until we see a funding source, until we see some way to, to mitigate the public safety issues, the public liability issues, that's a long-term plan, and I think it all has to fall into place before we could give it serious consideration, my opinion, it'd be a nice thing to do, just not a very high priority.
So, in a consensus form, you're not in favor of including it with the CIP?
Not today.
I'm not either, for the same reasons, I mean, Bob talked about annuities and such, but I don't, I don't see anything close by, nothing's been put in front of me as far as we've got these funds, and we could, you know, it takes a certain minimum amount to, to get any kind of a foundation going.
Now it's included in the CIP.
Maybe others have seen it, but I haven't seen it.
If you include it.
Let me go fin- finish going around the horn here, man.
Right, at this point, I have talked to nobody that supports it, everybody I've talked to does not support it, and I have a 77-year-old relative that says have them go up and down St. Matthias Steps if they wanna get some exercise.
And I'm assuming council, if I'm right, I'm, you're a yes, Councilman Shahadi?
I, I say if there's an outside group interested in take the full liability of it, fund it, maintain it, I, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Is that a yes or a no? Right now, is that a yes or a no?
We, we include it.
Right now, we're talking about including it.
No, if they present all that, I mean, I don't have a problem, I would, I would support it, but I-
To clarify that, that would technically mean it's no longer city property and not-
That's correct, like, when they take the liability, I mean, that's theirs, so.
It would not be in the CIP then.
Yeah, that's-
It would be private property.
That's correct.
Scott, I have you down for no already.
And that, because that's not what's in front of us right now, what's in front of us right now is do we wanna-
Right.
Yeah, so.
Phil?
I, I, I'm not sure the exact date that the city actually closed that down, but I remember the discussion, and their, the activities of student, or of, not students, habit, um, of individuals using those steps to venture sideways and up and down access, um, was there, whether it was criminal activity or, or whatever, damage demo, uh, to properties and so forth, that was the reason, one of the major reasons why it was closed to start with, and I'm kinda with Osama, if there's a group that wants it, fine.
Yeah, I'd listen to that.
If it doesn't-
I would too.
Then it, then it's not part of the plan.
I'm not interested in putting it in the CIP at this point, it's been here 100 years as it is, the CIP could-
Councilman Ray.
Be changed.
I concur with Osama and, uh, my colleague to the right, if somebody else wants it, fine, in which case it wouldn't be in the CIP.
So at this point, uh, the issue of the cemetery steps will not be included in the CIP, we have moved off the dime.
Just a point of issue, would, would you, Mr. Mayor, uh, be against a group of individuals raising funds to take over the stairs?
No. It's, first of all, it's not my call, I don't have that kind of authority, as you're well aware.
Correct.
Uh, and I cannot speak for the council, it's up to them, and I think you have heard from at least three council members here that, uh-
Four, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to that.
I'm not either.
You know, I think it's, it's, it's safe to say that there isn't anybody that is opposed to not rebuilding those steps, but it's not that high on the priority list right now, 'cause there are other things of priority that, that we need to be conscious in spending the taxpayers' dollars on, it's that simple.
Okay, is this included in the CIP at this point?
It's not in the proposed CIP.
That was my next discussion, I know, sorry, Jeanette.
It's not in the, in the draft CIP, it was a request from Councilman, Councilwoman, uh, Phillips to, uh, to include it, and so that will be up to council to determine whether or not that's done, so, your, your task is really to, you know, are there projects that are missing, are there projects that you believe have a higher priority and should be moved up on the list, um, are there projects you'd like to take out of the CIP that, that shouldn't be in there from your perspective, and that's really your task as, as a group, it's a tool, it's a plan, and that's all it is, you're not committing to do any of these projects until it comes before you during the budget process, and subsequently the contractual process.
It's, the only question I have here, is this like a dead date here that if you don't add something or take, that's it for the CIP, can't we bring-
Well, well-
Project, I mean, at any time to add to the CIP, or do we have to meet a certain date that we cannot cross, I mean, is that?
Well, the, the, the CIP would not be updated most likely until annually, but obviously, projects can come up throughout the year, and, and those can be funded or not funded, the council can proceed with those, you know, that doesn't prevent, this is simply a tool, and that's all it is, it gives you an idea of what's out there, what the cost is, where potential funding sources are, it's simply a tool, that's all it is, you don't commit until budget time, and when a project is brought forward for, uh, for contract, after bid.
I mean, for the time being, how many, how many projects do we have on the CIP, uh, just a number?
I, I wanna say it's 104.
Okay, and none of them are funded right now, we have to look each individual project and see where we're going to bring the funding to support that project.
Some, some are funded, some are partially identified.
Some that we agreed on the budget, I mean, to-
Some are partially, right, some are partially identified, some are to be, to be determined, and obviously, for example, if, if a project was to receive outside funding, like, uh, STP funding or grant funding, that could raise its score and, and bring it up to a higher priority.
Oh, yeah, priority, yeah.
You can choose to do something at the bottom of the list, because it's a priority to the council, majority of council members.
A- and the other way that, uh, capital improvement plans are, are supposed to work, the, the further out a project is, kind of the less detailer is, then as it moves forward, the more, the more the details get filled in, is more project details come on, and, and funding sources are identified, and that's why you would update it each year, so the ones that are completed roll off, new ones come on, and the information's updated as it moves forward towards, you know, something that we would actually do in, in, within that five-year pro- process, so it's, it's supposed to be kinda rolling, like.
It strikes me that we're really mixing up the language a little bit here, we're really talking about two different things, there's the comprehensive plan, and then there's the capital improvement program, aren't they two different documents?
They're two different documents, the capital improvement program, it, it's kind of, it's an implementation tool for the comprehensive plan, it's kind of a, you know, if you kinda look at the steps from-
They, they're, they're interrelated, but they're really two different things.
Right, it's kind of, it's kind of a bridge between, you know, the, the broad vision of the comprehensive plan and the real specific of, of, of an annual budget, so it's to kinda get it, get from here to there.
This is a five-year capital improvement, and the-
The comprehensive plan is much longer term.
Yeah.
Right, that's the point I wanna make.
But the CIP goes underneath that.
I, agreed, but there are a couple of things I think that might be missing, and it was, one of them I did address in email over time, is get into the area of public safety, there is scant mention of a potential fire station on East Hill, that's okay, but there's no mention of what the future of the current public safety building is, it was built in the 70s, you know, you gotta think that sometime in the next 10, 15 years, we're gonna have to do something with it, it's not mentioned in, in the long-term outlook at all, and all I'm saying is it may deserve some attention.
Um, actually-
Is it in there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to find on-
East Hill is in there.
East Hill's in there, and there's also-
I mean, yeah, there is mention of East Hill, but nothing about the existing-
In the cap- there was also, they put in, if, for a public needs, on page two, page two of the capital improvement plan, not the comprehensive plan, on page 231.
Which is why I'm back to, there's two different documents.
There's two different documents.
Trying to figure out where all this stuff is.
On two, is a, is a, needs, a set, future needs assessment for the public safety building, which is, the initial step would be to conduct a study to see what, what our future needs for that space would be, and that was submitted by, jointly by the Fire and Police Department, so that is part of the CIP.
Makes perfect sense, um, the, we also have, uh, two large projects we've discussed in terms of City Hall and the Arts Center, having the engineering studies complete, are they in one of these documents? They're in the CIP.
They're in the CIP.
Because what, what's posted on the website is the comprehensive plan, not the CIP.
Oh, it's the wrong link.
It's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, that's what's in front, that's what's in front of us, Adam.
It should have been what, it should have been the same document you had in January, which is this one.
Okay.
Apparently, the long, the wrong link.
The wrong link was posted on the agenda.
Okay.
Well, that, that explains a lot, then.
Yeah. It does.
Andrew, will you re-link this?
Fran will, first thing I want.
Wouldn't wanna mislead anybody.
It was just me, huh?
I sent you the link, for the CIP, the other day.
It's not on the agenda.
The email that you-
That makes so much more sense now, we're talking fast.
So are we taking action on this tonight?
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
No, 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 there's no action.
Well, I knew, I kinda figured that, but-
Anybody else?
Are we planning to bring it back next week for action, or?
My question is, when would you like us to come back, would you like us to come back next week, first meeting in March? That's kind of up to you, is to when you will be ready to, to, to make some decisions.
Kind, kinda what, in order to adopt it, you know, it's gonna need a, a final draft that we'd adopt by resolutions, so before we get to that point, you know, want the council to settle on the project, on changes that they wanna make, projects they wanna add, drop, you know, the Eagle Ridge Sewer Project that you brought up, things like that, that you, changes you wanna see, and once there's a consensus that, that you have a draft that you wanna act on, then we'll bring it to you with the resolution to adopt it, so it, it's a matter of when you're comfortable that you have that, the draft, in a sense you want, we'll keep coming back until you reach that point.
Well, Eagle Ridge is long overdue.
More than one week, Craig.
Sorry?
More than one week, I'd prefer.
I've lived out there 19 years.
Would you repeat your question, please?
I just said Eagle Ridge is long overdue for sewer, really.
Comment. Okay, thank you. So noted, anybody else, council?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to see if there's consensus to add that or not?
Certainly can do that, uh, on that kind of a roll, and we'll begin with, uh, Councilman Fred.
Nothing, thank you.
Pardon me?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
No.
No, no.
Sewer extension.
The sewer extension to Eagle Ridge.
Just starting to read it now, I, I'm not opposed to inserting it, I-
I mean, we can certainly do that at a later date as well.
Now, look, I, I would, I wouldn't suggest that we look at that at a different date, what, I mean, that we just got this document.
I think that's fair.
And maybe by the time it comes around again, we could have a, the staff could have an opportunity to tell us where it's gonna be funded, if it's gonna be funded, how could it be funded, is it going to be from property owners, uh, uh, on a benefit district that we've used others?
Do a benefit district, you can do the sewer extension reserve, you can do a combination, we required, uh, the, our most recent project was a combination of residential funding and the sewer extension reserve for the Colorado Street?
North Crescent.
North Crescent, uh, so that was a combination of sewer extension and, uh, local contribu- or resident contribution.
I just remember there was one on, uh, Myrtle Lane, there was four, have four or five houses picked up and put on, there, there were a series of projects, and I don't know who paid, I don't know whether the homeowner had to pay, city paid for it entirely, um-
Those are all-
Whether it's a, you know, ends up being a benefit district and the homeowner, uh- Well, that's what I mean, we, staff can have input on, at that, and then we can table, take a look at it.
And I agree with Councilman Shahadi, let's table that particular question, comments that you brought up, Jeanette, thank you for challenging, council.
Not to interject, but is any other projects that any council members want me, want us to take a look at, bring to you for the, that weren't in there?
Well, in the absence of anything in front of us, because of the error and linkage, if you will.
Just contact me.
I, I know, other, other new projects, the projects that, uh, for example, would you like the band shell included, as a squad in funding, funded, uh, so we could put it in a several format, are there other projects that you can think of that you'd like included?
Sewers are enough.
Um? Osama? Okay.
I'm gonna look through it some more, then.
Well, other projects, though.
I know, no.
I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't bring it back, uh, next week, but maybe the Thursday of March, or the third week of March, that's something that we can-
Why don't we plan on bringing it back for the March in-depth, uh, and follow up for action at the subsequent meeting?
Okay, that sounds good.
Anything else, Andrew?
Nope.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, uh, time for council's comments, we'll begin with Councilman Ringwald.
Done, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Fitzgerald.
Nothing.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, nothing, thank you.
Councilman Biden.
I was about to tell my wife, uh, Happy Valentine's Day.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Greg?
Just a reminder, I'm not sure that you got an email or not, but you will be if you haven't, from Fran, Tuesday, March 25th is the Chamber Dinner, if you're going to be attending, um, representing- If you're going to be attending, representing the city, and you would like Fran to sign you up, please let Fran know. Again, the city does pay for the council member, spouses, up to you, but just let Fran know if you'll be attending, that is representative of the city, and we'll get you signed up. March 25th, rendezvous, 5:15.
Okay. And unlike most of the council, I would certainly like to wish you Happy Valentine's Day to, well, my mom, my daughter-in-law, Mary Hopkins, my mom's name is Betty Jones, by the way, my granddaughter Addison Hopkins, my friend and former mayor, Evie Shaughnessy, and of course, my wife, Jill Hopkins. Is there a motion to adjourn?
You made a list, didn't you? You weren't going to forget anyone. Shouldn't we take attendance first?